Don't forget to sign in if you haven't already. The sign up sheet is gonna be important for what it shows and what doesn't show.
Okay, that's six. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First up is modifications to the agenda. The only thing I had is, I'm not sure if at the last meeting if we came up with agenda items for the next, you know, the regular meeting on the 10th. We probably did, and I probably didn't write it down. I don't, I don't know, but maybe we could just go over those quickly.
Alright.
After, after we're done. So, any, any other modifications? If not, the agenda item is to address an allegation of an open meeting law violation. How does the board want to proceed with this? Do I read the allegation? Do I summarize it? I believe it should be written or read into the record as it was written, after which point we can discuss and/or present our statements.
Normally, I would agree with that, but this is so rambling and long and largely incoherent as to an actual complaint. I wonder if we can just summarize the highlights, which I think boil down to the writers, the complainant's personal opinion that she believes violation has taken place.
I think, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think that's that in and of itself is why the whole thing needs to be read. Because of the nature of the allegations and the way it was presented.
I would argue that we can put the letter itself available as part of the meeting, can't we? As a part of the record without going through the bother of reading it.
Yeah, but I mean, we don't have an official summary.
Can't hurt to read.
Yeah, seems like it makes more sense to read it than to argue or discuss 10 minutes for 10 minutes why we're not gonna read it. Cause it's too long.
Let's just get it out of the way.
Have it in front of me if no one else does.
No, I've got it. We're having it. On 10/22/25, I stopped at the Davies Library to drop off a paper for Candace at 1:00. I then went down to say hello to Marcel and Deb. I asked Marcel a quick question about the insurance meeting the night before and left. I wasn't in the office for more than five minutes. I went back up, out through the library. At that time, Will was sitting at the table just to the left of the door at the top of the stairs. I spoke, then exited the library. As I went out the front door, I met Sue Hayes going in. We said hello and went on our ways. I took pictures of the two cars in front of the church at the town truck. I saw that, saw the town truck parked across from the library. Tim Yarrow's car in front along with Chris Hayes' car in front of the library. I turned down Lower Waterford Road to see if Will and Sue were still there. I took a picture of those cars at 2:08. I got out, went down into the town office where Marcel was and Deb was not. He said, "I believe there's an illegal meeting going on upstairs." I said, "I agree, that is why I am here." Deb was not in the office at the time. I proceeded up the stairs and stopped at the landing. I could hear Jim Hayes and Tim Yarrow speaking. I could also hear Deb talking to Sue Hayes regarding the highway budget. Will was assigned to work on the highway budget with Jim and Heather per the September meeting minutes. I proceeded up the stairs where I found Tim Yarrow, Jim Hayes, and Chris Hayes sitting on the couch and chairs in front of the fireplace. Will Jones and Sue Hayes were sitting at the table to the left of the stairs where Deb was standing answering questions. I proceeded over to where the bookcases of new books are and viewed the new books. I could hear Chris and Jim discussing with Tim that they feel he is being harassed and singled out for attacks. My name was mentioned multiple times in the maybe five to 10 minutes I was there. Tim Yarrow said there was nothing they could do with Kathy Hodgson. Mr. Hayes says it is his department, it is constantly attacked, and time to look at other departments. I got my book and left. I stopped back down to tell Marcel they were on opposite sides of the room, but both within earshot of each meeting that was taking place. It certainly appears is an open meeting violation. I believe it was an illegal meeting Mr. Yarrow was having with Hayes. Did any of the other board members know this was going to take place? Mr. Hayes attacked a prior selectman for having a meeting with his two employees without him or any board member's knowledge when they showed up at the house. At that time, he went to the chairman, told him the complaints, suggested a meeting of all three with the board, which was not accepted. How did Mr. Hayes know this meeting took place without someone leaking it to him? It is a violation of the open meeting to have three members in the same room. The room is small enough that one could listen in on the other conversation, or one could speak across the room to the meeting taking place. Mr. Yarrow and the Hayes could also have, would also have to walk by Sue and Will to get to the back corner of the library. Who was to say they didn't speak to each other? It is a complete violation. Mr. Yarrow should have left the building immediately when he saw Sue and Will sitting there working. This board continues to be non-transparent in their actions. Deb and Marcel, will you please sign this as witnesses? I have also written the VLCT to say if this, see this as a violation as well with three board members in the same room. Thank you, Kathy Hodgson.
If it weighs the chair, I would like to read a statement of my own into the record.
Okay.
My name is Will Jones. On Tuesday, October 21st, after the conclusion of the Select Board's special meeting, Sue Hayes and I arranged for the two of us to get together around 1:00 the following afternoon in the Davies Memorial Library to discuss town budget matters. We sat at one of the wooden tables to the right of the door that leads downstairs. At some point later within the first hour of Sue and my meeting, Tim Yarrow arrived at the library along with a town employee and their spouse. Unbeknownst to Sue and I, Tim had scheduled to meet with the two of them that afternoon regarding a private personnel matter. Tim and the other two attendees of this meeting sat on the far side of the library by the fireplace, approximately 30 feet away from where Sue and I were working. At no point did Sue or I listen to or interact with the discussion Tim was having, nor did he listen to or interact with Sue and I concerning the budget research we were doing. After Tim's meeting ended, the other two participants walked by the table where Sue and I were working and exchanged pleasantries with us. They left, and Tim sat down in an armchair across the aisle from us. At this point, Sue and I stopped working and engaged in a brief conversation with Tim about our personal lives. At no point did any of us discuss what we were working on in our respective groups, nor did we discuss any other pending town business. After about 10 to 15 minutes of the personal conversation among the three of us, Tim got up and left, and Sue and I resumed our work. Title I of the Vermont Statute, subsection 310-5A, defines a meeting as, quote, "A gathering of a quorum of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body or for the purpose of taking action," unquote. Title I, subsection 310-5C, further clarifies that a meeting, quote, "shall not mean occasions when a quorum of a public body attends social gatherings, conventions, conferences, training programs, press conferences, media events, or otherwise gathers, provided that the public body does not discuss specific business of the public body that, at the time of the exchange, the participating members expect to be business of the public body at a later time," unquote. Because no town business was discussed or conducted in the short time the three of us spoke, under state statute Title I, subsection 310-5C, a meeting did not take place. Furthermore, the mere fact that the three of us being in the same physical building or even in the same large room does not constitute a meeting, because our meetings and conversations were separate, and at no point were the contents thereof discussed among the three of us. Because the interactions that Sue, Tim, and I had do not meet the statutoryal definition of a meeting, namely that we never met to discuss, nor did we at any time discuss specific business of the Town of Waterford among us, no violation of the open meeting law contained in Title I, subsection 310, took place, because no illegal meeting took place. Furthermore, the spacious allegations of the complainants are patently false and meritless. Signed, William Jones.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I agree and follow with what Will has stated, but I would also suggest and state that I don't believe Will and Sue were discussing any town business that was before themselves, and I certainly wasn't discussing town business other than what had already been authorized by the board in previous open meetings and the authorized contents of that, or what my business was about with Mr. Hayes and his wife, Christine. I have nothing else to add on that matter.
Okay.
Will, you did it so well. I had written a few things to say, but your account was dead on. It was, it was what happened that day. There are a lot of complaints in that letter. The only one that we actually need to address is whether or not there was an open meeting violation, and I think that Will has done the legwork and stated the statutes that there was not an illegal meeting. But, I guess, I would like to add that taking pictures of Will's in my car at 1:00, two members of the board are allowed to meet, and Will and I weren't meeting about current town business. We were meeting to go through old town reports and learn some things about the history of the town's budgets. So, not only were we not violating open meeting, but two people are allowed to work together. So, the very first part of that letter where she took pictures of our cars was, this was kind of insulting, because we're allowed to meet. And there's another complaint in there about that we might have been working on the highway department budget together. Well, we weren't, but we could have, had we wanted to. And here's another thing that really isn't mentioned in the letter other than to say that Deb was speaking with Will and I at one point. Yes, Deb came up the stairs and basically asked us what we were doing and why we were meeting about budget without Heather. And we explained to her that we weren't working on the current budget, that we were going back through old town reports and looking at historical budgets. So, had Ms. Hodgson asked Deb when she returned downstairs what was going on, the town clerk could have filled her in that she had already asked us those questions. And then I believe she also called you, which prompted you to call me. And there were ways for her to learn this information without making these accusations. And because Will's statement was so perfect, I really don't have anything else to add.
I just have one question for you, Mr. Chairman. The original complaint was sent in an email to you on Sunday, the 26th
Yep.
in the morning.
Yep.
It was also sent to the Assistant Town Treasurer, the Town Clerk, with the Treasurer CC from the complaint. At the end of her complaint, she asks, "Deb and Marcel, will you please sign this as witnesses?" Did either of them respond to that email in kind?
No.
Okay.
No. I, unless I missed something, I have not seen any, any response from them.
Mr. Chair, as you answer no to that question, do you have any other information to note whether Ms. Hodgson actually approached them and asked them to sign the letter? Or did she just threaten it here in this note that we have received from Ms. Hodgson?
I don't know, because I haven't spoken with her since. I spoke with her two days before she sent this email. I haven't spoken with her since, and I haven't, I have spoken with Deb and Marcel, but I did not ask them about, about this complaint of alleged violation of open meeting law.
Well, on that note then, did you have any substantive conversation, conversation with Ms. Hodgson regarding the substance of her allegations and her apparent complaint that at least was pending in her mind at that time?
We, yeah, she didn't call me. We, we were at a, how do I put this? Social gathering place. And she was talking with Marcel first, and then as I walked up to them, she turned and started telling me essentially what, I don't remember word for word what was said, just that roughly the same, same thing that's contained in her, in her email. I said that, oh, and maybe I should, I don't know if I should add this, but it's a matter of public record, so Marcel did email me on that afternoon, the afternoon of the 22nd, to say that he believed an illegal open meeting was taking place upstairs. And, but before I talked with Mrs. Hodgson, I had called Sue to, I was just curious what her think was on it, because she was part of the, part of what happened, and she had told me. So, I, I told Mrs. Hodgson that I didn't believe an open meeting law violation took place. She didn't say at that time that she was going to file a complaint.
Well, that was the question I was coming to. Did she receive any information that would have, from you, that would have mitigated her belief or mitigated any of the facts she was trying to allege that a violation had taken place?
I don't remember exactly what I told her, but that I was, that, that Will and Sue had, were researching past town budgets, sort of doing, you know, researching budget trends, I guess, is how I put it. And she, she directly asked me if I knew that you were meeting with the Hayes, and I said no, but that you had been authorized by the board to try to bring some resolution to a matter between, you know, with the Hayes. I don't remember, I, I, I sort of, I don't remember exactly what I said, but I, I told her that I didn't, from what I'd heard so far, I didn't believe an open meeting law violation took place. Probably I shouldn't have engaged at all, but I was asked and I answered.
I think it's appropriate to have the conversation. I had hoped that we, this would have been cut off at the pass, and that information would have been shared or at least received on the part of Ms. Hodgson, that this was a complaint not worth lodging or pursuing. And if she had received information from you at the time you spoke with her, I think it would have been appropriate that she pulled back her, her thoughts and, and not make a public matter out of this.
Cause that is the reason we're here tonight, isn't it? Because an official complaint was made, i.e., a complaint was made in writing to the Chair of the Select Board, which triggers a process under, I believe, Title I, subsection 314. I don't know if I have the exact subsection right, but that triggers a process whereby we have 10 calendar days from the initial receipt of the complaint to address the complaint in open meeting, where we either have a choice to accept the complaint, right any wrong actions that took place at that meeting, and, you know, make an action plan for how to prevent, you know, illegal meetings from happening going forward, or that we outright issue a denial of the complaint.
I believe that the three of us have said our denial, and I don't know that voting on it would be appropriate, because the three of us would vote that no, nothing happened. But would be interesting, Ron, to, to know if you side with Ms. Hodgson or with us on the legality of us being in the same building at the same time for a brief period.
I, I don't, I don't see any open meeting law violation took place. You know, is it unfortunate that the three of you were here at the same time? Yeah, but it, it, I mean, you would have no reason to check for the others about, you know, are you going to the library today to?
Well, no, Will and I did. Will and I can to meet, but we were allowed to as two of the board.
Yeah, but, you know, Tim certainly wouldn't have called around and said, you know, is the library free today?
Well, the part I'm actually curious about is whether it was on the record where I stated Jim and I were meeting at 2:00 on this day in question, or whether I had just mentioned offhandedly after the meeting that Jim and I were meeting at 2:00 on this day in question. And it, it's irrelevant anyway, because it's part of the business and the work that the board had already acted on and had authorized.
I do remember us saying that you could meet with Jim to finalize things, but I don't remember a time or a place. But I do remember us saying that you, you were the one who was going to meet with him and not any of us.
I was pleased to bump into my board colleagues at any time in any place. I'm very familiar with the open meeting laws. I deny that an open meeting violation took place. Period.
So procedurally, what needs to happen still tonight is that we need to either approve a motion that we accept responsibility and guilt, or we approve a motion that we deny that a violation took place. And if I?
Will, do you have a citation for that?
So even though we're the ones accused, we're allowed to vote? Cause I would make a motion that no violation of the open meeting law took place on October 22nd.
I would second that motion, but just to clarify your point, it is an interesting situation where a quorum of the board is involved in a situation that they might otherwise have to accuse themselves from, but because the three of us recusing, even if Wade were here at this meeting, would result in a lack of a quorum on the board being present.
Right.
We, we can't recuse ourselves.
Right.
Which is why I question whether there is a, an action that must take place anyway pursuant to Title 314.
Do we have to issue anything in writing to Ms. Hodgson about our denial of a violation?
So, give me a second. Let me pull up my correspondence with the League of City of Towns.
Okay.
Making any progress over there, Quan?
Oh, a couple of pieces.
Oh, there you go. Oh, I'm gonna touch the computer because I don't remember my VLCT password. Let's see.
You're having more fun than us, Quan.
I don't know what it's fun at. Something to break the monotony, that's all.
Okay. My messages.
There's a lot of pretty pieces.
All right, from my good friend now at the VLCT, Carl Andier. During the meeting, the body should publicly discuss the situation and determine whether there was an inadvertent violation of the law. Based on this determination, it should issue a statement that either denies the allegation and states that no cure is necessary, or acknowledges that there's an inadvertent violation that will be cured within 14 calendar days. The public body should not publicly acknowledge a violation that is anything other than inadvertent, excuse me. The public body should not publicly acknowledge a violation that is anything other than inadvertent without specific legal advice to do so. So essentially, we have to issue a statement that either denies the allegation or acknowledges that there was a violation.
And by issuing a statement, is the meeting minutes from this meeting where we say that, is that an admissible form of notification?
That is an excellent question. I might, I might follow up with him on that one.
Cause it will definitely appear in our meeting minutes.
Cause it's, it sounds like it should appear in our meeting minutes, but does that mean we have to take time to draft the statement?
Well, I would solve that with the motion saying, I would change my motion to say that we deny an open meeting violation and no cure is necessary.
I think it has to be no more complicated than that.
Okay, I will, if that is a motion on the table, then I will second it.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion on it? So, so if that's all that's required, does that mean we don't, we don't write a written response to the complaint, allegation?
I'm hearing from Will that none is required as, as I'm understanding from the statements he just read, and that our statement is simply what we're now about to vote on, on the public record.
Okay.
I don't think, to me, it doesn't sound like it needs to be any more complicated than that.
Okay.
So the language I'm understanding that we're voting on is the Waterford Select Board denies any open meeting violation took place as alleged in Kathy Hodgson's letter dated what?
10/26/25.
Say that again, Will?
With the date of her letter.
Yeah.
The alleged violation was October 22nd. But we have to add in there that no cure is necessary.
Right, I'm getting to that. So, again, the language is, "The Waterford Select Board denies any open meeting violation took place"
On October 22nd.
"as alleged in Kathy Hodgson's email, October 26, 2025." And therefore,
No cure.
No cure is necessary or required. Just, no cure is necessary.
Okay.
Okay, is that worded the way everyone happy with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I don't think we need to read it again. All those in favor of that motion? Say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Any abstain?
Well, Wade is not present.
Maybe we ought to put on the record that Wade was not mentioned by name in Kathy Hodgson's allegation.
He also wasn't available this evening. He also wasn't available this evening for the meeting.
Well, I suggested that he be excused from any proceedings.
But his original response was that he wasn't available this evening anyways for the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sure he would have been here if he could have been.
Well, I wasn't terribly available to this either.
Okay, all right. The 11/10 agenda. I don't know if you, you folks have anything on what? I guess budget is the most important item, budget presentation. Correct? And minutes of whatever meetings.
Approved meeting minutes.
Approved meeting minutes. Budget presentation. Deb had asked for-
Cemetery deeds.
Cemetery update and deeds.
Those should go upfront, because they're something really quick and simple. And then you should, you should, you should reserve the majority of the meeting for budget.
Yep, and we can-
Disclosure of settlement agreement?
Oh.
That's suggested, that's-
Yeah.
Nothing more than that.
And that requires actually probably disclosing the agreement that was made in January of 2024, which was never accepted by the employee, so therefore never, never fulfilled.
Well, I wonder if that's not employee relations and not subject to disclosure?
Well, it was a settlement agreement. It was sent by our lawyer in January of 2024. It was just never accepted.
The same conditions were at play here in 2025, but it was accepted.
Right, but they were the same. I think it, I think it merits talking about the history of this particular settlement and how it was approved.
I'd love to do exactly that.
It was approved in December of 2023, two years ago, nearly two years ago.
Yeah. Again, I wonder if, I ask whether there is a employee relations confidentiality that excludes this from public disclosure.
Considering it was the exact same agreement, just almost two years later.
Was it publicly disclosed two years earlier?
Uh-uh, it was money that was deemed having been owed.
I don't know if we have to solve that tonight, though.
We have a week to think about it.
Yeah, okay, all right. Should we have a Citizens Concerns after the-
No, no, we don't have time for that, not with the budget presentation. Well.
Well, it is our, it is our-
It is our monthly, regular monthly meeting.
Yeah.
Put it at the end.
Yeah, yeah, that's where I got it.
Because the budget is the primary reason we are meeting.
And, and then I assume we need an executive session at the end to finally try to get the performance evaluations.
Evaluations.
Yes, it'll be a long night.
It's going to be a long night.
Yeah, they all are.
Is, uh, do we, have you come up with one for Hannah?
I have not. I need to discuss with her again what her job duties are.
Okay, all right. Anything else for this?
I'll take that as an action item.
Yeah, something on my mind here. I don't know if it's next week that it ought to come up or not, but I don't understand the, the persistent, what feel like either harassment or attacks the Board experiences by Kathy Hodgson. I don't understand where the voltage and the distrust comes from. It's bizarre to me. And I'm wondering if the Board needs to consider taking some action to, legal action. Or research legal action to push back on the constant wasteful frivolous complaints or conduct coming from the singular person.
I would say this is the first official complaint that has been levied against us by this person. She has made other accusations during Citizens Concerns, but this is the first one that's been an actual complaint that wrote, required us having to spend extra time to meet and dispense with it. A good point of research might be the Town of Burke. I can't remember if this actually made it to a court or not, in which case it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to find this case. I believe it's Town of Burke versus Kevin Blay. You can also find that in all over the Caledonian. Last year, they had a citizen who would make serial public records requests and complaints that turned out to be either, you know, frivolous or merit, or meritless, or if they had merit to them, I'm not sure. But he made so many of them that it was in the news for a little while that the town office up there had its, had its hands full and was rather exasperated. I don't know that we're at that level yet, but
I would think we are, but no.
Well, I think, wait, Ron.
No, I, it just seems like, you know, we, we take complaints from citizens. Do I like them?
But she had an opportunity to be informed, and she either didn't accept your explanation or she didn't ask Deb, who had just been upstairs, to ask Will and I what we were doing. So she either willfully ignored what she was told and went forward, or, I don't know, but I know-
I always subscribe to the maxim that whatever, what feels like malice can often be attributed to a lack of understanding. And it could very well be that she wasn't aware that sending a written letter, which in her mind could have been just putting it in the public record, she may not have been aware that that actually triggered this whole process by law.
Yeah, she may not have. I mean, I didn't, until you researched it, you and Tim re, yeah, you and Tim researched it. I, I didn't know that. I thought it was just going to be-
Neither did I.
We'd write, we'd write, we'd write back and tell them what we found out. I didn't realize we'd have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, neither did I. To Will's point, however, Ms. Hodgson has made record requests, and I'm speculating on this next point, but-
Only one.
But I question whether Ms. Hodgson orchestrated other record requests coming into the Board as well. Again, I emphasize that I'm speculating, but the Board has received a couple of record requests.
I'm not so serious.
I would seriously doubt the first one just because of, just because of what I know about the two people, Kathy and the other person who did the records request.
I agree with your assessment there, Ron. I don't think there's any relation between the two requests.
Not like so.
Well, there's a lot about the local town politics I don't understand and I can't see. But what I do understand is that the one record request went to a certain date, let's call that date X, and the second record request picked up where X left off. So I do see similarities in the two record requests.
Didn't they?
They did.
They dovetailed perfectly.
I think, I think it revolves around the end of a calendar month, though. Or again, that could be just my fault.
Is it time for me to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
I would second that if you made it.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second it.
Allois in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Those opposed? Thanks for your time.
6:38 PM. At least my chickens go to bed.
Like I said, you, you must have put them to bed before. Was that you flushing your brights at me as I was coming down Old County Road?
No, I was coming down Old County Road as well.
Oh, well, I, I, I left my house at around 5, oh, 5:25.
I left at 5:45, so I didn't see ya.
Oh.
But I was going down as well.
Must have been one of your neighbors.
One of my neighbors is selling the house next door.